And risk management, I think that Cindy would like to give an overview first on what we're doing and changing because, as you know, we're converting from insured, from self-insured. And so through that transition is what we're doing there. We're in year two?
Actually, at this point, we are fully insured for all of the things that used to be paid claims paid out of our risk management fund. And so what you see in this budget here is that we've, we have to keep the fund open for a while because we have legacy claims. So each year, as part of the audit, we establish a reserve for those very specific legacy claims that are still open. HR and risk management has done a great job of closing as many as they can. And as we wind down those legacy claims, at some point, we will be able to close this fund and hopefully, at that point, still have a residual balance. The, the claims that we have outstanding versus what we have in the fund is a pretty favorable. But again, until we do away with all those legacy claims in both general liabilities, some workers' comp, et cetera, we have to keep this fund open and pay them. And that's why you see on page 178, the cash carryover is a big fat negative number because we're, we're taking down the balance as we pay out those legacy claims toward the eventual goal of closing the fund. This past year, we made the complete transition from a budget standpoint in that now, the only thing we pay for out of this fund, out of the fund balances, is legacy claims. We have started putting anything associated with an individual fund as a loss into that fund, as well as any insurance proceeds associated with it, and any of the insurance premiums associated with it. So each fund is bearing its own costs, both premiums and deductibles, and also taking in its own recovery from insurance proceeds. And so we've, I think we've done a pretty good job in a couple of years on making that transition, and eventually we can close this fund. The other part of the expenses in the fund, and then I'll just give this over to Gabrielle, are the people who are still managing the city's risk in general, and also the legacy claims that we're trying to close.
But just as an example, this morning, Wayne and I were talking about one of those legacy claims that just sort of came up. And so we'll be probably bringing that out of this risk management fund, just to show you that they do crop up. Because if it was filed before October-
October 1st, 2013 is the date.
Then we, we are responsible through this risk management fund in order to cover those claims. A little overview of risk management. And Amy sort of runs that, that element of-
Yeah, Amy pretty much runs that and does a very good job.
As Cindy said, we have just nine work comp legacy claims that we're still working on, and one we are actually hoping to maybe settle this year and close out. They don't really have a lifespan, so they could go on indefinitely unless we do some, you know, have some meetings with our insurance carrier who's handling them on a daily basis now and maybe make some changes and close these claims out. I'm really not sure what you'd like me to tell you.
How many, how many outstanding claims do we have?
We have nine work comp. And there's about, I think, Cindy, 12-
Twelve between auto and general liability.
Okay.
Many of them with very small reserves, a couple of the big ones.
Those are against the city for auto accidents? Is that what you're telling me?
Exactly.
Okay.
And general liability issues. I'm trying to think of some of the other GL issues we have.
And is the door shut? In other words, we, can we get any from that period of time anymore, or is the statute of limitations up?
No, because the date is October 1st, 2013. So if anybody files a claim associated with a date of accident prior to October 1st, 2013, I believe that they still can, because we've had a couple recently, and they would go back and be paid out of this risk management.
How long does that continue?
I believe it's five years.
Depends on what the claim is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it will depend on the, how long, what the claim is and what the statute of limitations is on the actual claim is.
So the, the return of, of the reserve could change in future years if there are future claims. Is that correct?
That's true. But you, also through the Florida League, they have a provision where they will cover your legacy claims. We chose not to do that because the policy was higher. But I, as Amy was saying, we can negotiate with them. If we can get those down where the, you know, the, the risk is minimized, then we may just go back and then close everything out at that point. But that'll be a choice we, we make determining how much the premium would be and how that would be covered.
Just to give you some numbers, as of the close of fiscal 13, which was the point at which from October 1, 13 on, we, everything has to be back filed in order to come in. In that risk management fund, we had outstanding claims payable of about $1,005,000. So that's the reserve that we're holding for the various claims we're talking about, and an unrestricted fund balance of $2 million. So, you know, it would, it would take a lot of very old claims to come in and really eat, eat past that. So we feel very comfortable that we have more than a reserve in that fund to handle anything else that might crop up and to continue to pay the claims. One of the things I think we, maybe we didn't talk about with the CAFER is that during last year, we did have the closure of one of our most expensive and very old legacy claims, unfortunately with, with the death of the claimant. And so there was about $1,005,000 in reserve for future years that was released out of reserve and which, and which served to increase this fund balance right up to the $2 million mark. So until the end of last year, our reserves were more like $3 million, and now we're at about $1,005,000, and about $1,005,000 was released into balance, so.
And what, what, do you think the timeline is for this estimate?
Some of those workers' comp ones could be a while.
One in particular, our biggest one that we're hoping to settle in the next year, is about 12 years old now.
Damn.
Golly. And where would the, if there was any residual left, where would that go within the budget?
You know, that would be a proposal from the city manager and decision-making by you. This particular fund was actually established by ordinance. So the ordinance is fairly specific about, you know, how to, how each fund made contributions in years past and, you know, how, what the funds are reserved for and what residual balances might happen. So when it is time to close this fund out, we'll work with Wayne, make the necessary modifications to the ordinance, and then come to you with a proposal as to how to handle the residual balance. But I would say at this point, you know, probably another few years before we feel comfortable, well, you know, but before we feel comfortable that we could reduce these reserves any, because again, we still need a cushion for something that could still come along that we don't know about yet that would have to go back into this fund, so.
Amelia, to make it sort of clear is that each fund contributed in. The fairness would be each fund gets their, back to their respective funds. But again, that could be a policy decision of the council because it is all still city money.
Wayne, what do we do with that ordinance? We decommission that ordinance?
Yeah, if you're gonna, if you ultimately terminate that fund, we probably just repeal that ordinance.
Okay.
It's just one specific section of the code, so it could be repealed. Or, you know, possibly left in place in case down the road, somebody wants to go back to self-insurance. I don't know that that would happen. But it, it doesn't hurt anything if it sits there, but that would be up to Wayne, whether he, you know, and you, whether you think the, the code needs to be cleaned up in that way.
On page 180, there's just one big number there, the loss payment general, $450,000. I'm not in any way questioning, I'm just-
And that is the aggregate of what we paid for loss payments for the coming year coming out of the reserves. We have $1,005,000 in reserve. The last couple of years, we've been burning it to the tune of about 400 to 500 a year as those claims get paid down. So I didn't see anything in the last couple of years, actuals, that led me to, to change that number. If we can close some of them, it will be higher. But again, our reserves will, will go, be smaller at the end of the year, so.
Okay. You got 100% increase in schools and meetings. What are you, what are you attending this year that you didn't last?
We actually did that because we had a retirement in the risk management department, and the new employee who came in didn't have as many certifications as the old employee. So we kind of shifted some money around so that he could get all of those certifications. We wouldn't have to pay outside vendors to do the training for the district department.
So it's not going to be a reoccurring cost, it's a one-time?
It should get him caught up this year.
Okay.
Anyone have anything else? Just also, as a comment, with Amy and human resources work, it really keeps our premiums as low as possible. For example, our workman's comp claims are very manageable. And for an organization this size, we're looking, we're looked at very well because of the claims and the way we handle claims. We jump on top of it before an employee will have an aggravated issue. And so that has helped minimize the payment. The Florida League has given us a very good rating on our workman's comp.
As far as continuation, continual training for safety, compliance, those kind of things with OSHA, whether it's, you know, driving and texting, those kind of reminders of safety classes, are, we're continuing to do those?
Yes, that's David Keiki in our department. He is keeping track of all the different certifications required in all the different departments, making sure that they're up to date. Anything new that comes out, if we have a new policy, like the cell phone policy, he or Gabrielle would do some training with the departments to make sure they're up on everything.
That, that actually has a direct impact on our premiums with the league because we get credits for safety programs, we get credits for drug-free workplace policies, et cetera. So staying current on them actually knocks money off our premiums with the league.
What does security entail? What, how do you-
Your badge system.
Oh, is that, okay.
We're in charge of the badge system.
Okay.
And collecting them at time of termination.
They don't deactivate like a hotel key?
End of term, yeah.
To turn to check out.
Any other questions?
No.
There's no other questions. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you go with Ted and Tom are here to cover the electric? Yeah, you, just to, Cindy has a handout on the balances, cash balances that we had. There was a question yesterday, and so we, she put together a spreadsheet. And before we get into these guys, you just sort of get a overview of where we are in the balances.
This is something I put together at your request. And I went back to 2009 because I think it, it does a great job, particularly in a couple of funds, of showing where we've been and how far we've come. At the top, for the general fund, what you have is the unrestricted fund balance. And back in 2009, it was about $8.6 million. And you could see over the next couple of fiscal years, it deteriorated fairly well into the end of fiscal 2011. And we have come back in those two years, those last two budget years or audited years, to levels that are above where we were in 2009. Again, putting that in context, you've got essentially about $9 million worth of fund balance, unrestricted fund balance, for your general fund with about $19 to $20 million worth of expenditures, which is an extremely healthy percentage fund balance. And that's where you would go if you have storms or, you know, other unforeseen things that affect your expenditures or your revenues dramatically in any given year. So that's a very healthy level. If you look at the electric utility, I think we've examined this before, but look at 2009, $17 million in cash on hand with 11 of that restricted. The free cash on hand was $5 million. And that was really a low point for this utility. It was a year after a considerable number of capital expenditures with no replacement of that money. And it's also the year that you last had a rate structure study. And so one of the things the rate structure study did was say, wow, you have like 20 days of working capital. It's time to get that turned around. That isn't good. So over the course of the last five years, with a slight dip at the end of 2013, we've brought those levels back to about the 90-day mark, and we should be there at the end of this year, too.
Any slight dip? Explain that.
The slight dip was, you know, a couple of things, some capital expenditures, and also just, you know, a slight decrease in the rates. And, you know, we've been targeting 30, but certainly, you know, things go up and down as the year goes by. So right now, what we have on hand, what we had on hand at the end of the second quarter, even after, I think after we paid the debt service, was we were back up to 29. Because remember, we took $3 million and, and paid off the loan. So we're still in extremely good shape. And by the end of fiscal 14, I see that being a good number. And right around that 90-day mark. The water and sewer utility is another one. I, 9/30/2009, you had a total of $1 million in, in cash and investments reserves in that water and sewer utility, all of it restricted. And, and at the end of 2013, we were at $10 million.
Educate me about restricted. Is that a restriction? You say, is that a self-imposed restriction, or is that a contractual or, or requirement from, where does that requirement restrict that fund?
The two biggest components of the restricted balances are the debt service you have coming due in the coming year.
Okay.
Okay. So your cash isn't really free. And then in the electric utility, for instance, we have $4 million in customer deposits. We may have that cash, but it doesn't belong to us.
It's not us. It's not ours, yeah.
We can't spend it. So those are the two bigger components, the upcoming debt service and any, any customer deposits that you have on hand.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Cindy, what happened in 2009? Why is it low? I don't remember.
Wow. I wish we had Rob back. You know, we have talked about it a little bit, but I guess they had just come to the point where expenditures were high, you know, rates were probably not in the right place. I believe they had a bit of a rate study back then, but-
Yeah, we were still at eight, over 80 employees in our water and sewer department.
That was cutting it pretty close.
So certainly, given our conversation yesterday about having the wherewithal to, to move the plant and make those kinds of long-term plans, you're in a much nicer position. You know, I know we get fixated on the 90-day thing a lot in terms of working capital. But I have, over the last couple of years, we work with the Fitch rating people on our electric bonds. They have provided me with their criteria, all the ratios and their criteria for rating water and sewer bonds. And to be in the strongest rating category actually requires one year of unrestricted cash.
Oh.
And so being in this position, if we really are in five or six years contemplating a $25 million bond, which is too big for a bank-qualified loan, and would have to be a real bond issue, keeping this and our other ratios up in their strongest category will save us money because our bond rating will be much higher. We've not had a water-sewer rating because we've never issued that kind of a bond. And, and I think that that'll be part of what Rob and I will bring to you as the white paper. We'll run these ratios, compare them to the current Fitch ratings criteria, and suggest to you that we keep them all in that, in that AA-plus category, so we save money when we issue this bond.
And speaking of that white paper now, I hope the expectation is not next Tuesday I'm gonna have-
It is, Jim.
Rob and I, Rob and I talked at length yesterday after the meeting and stuff about what we're gonna do. And what we're gonna try to do is set out a time schedule for you to let you see the progress that we will make going down, down the lane. We're just trying to put our minds together on this. This was something that just sort of came up yesterday, is to try to set a time schedule. So we will proceed in that direction as well.
Yeah, we know it's not going to be able to wrap your arms around all of that and everything that's supposed to happen, but we still need a starting point.
That, correct. And that's what we'll work toward. And then we'll have the, the schedule set out that we can all see expectations. You know, for example, the 2021 is the one where we have that sort of sets us free in one area, but at the same time, the STEP program, which is very critical, is something that we can work toward now. It's still gonna take a lot, some legislative changes on your all's part because we have to have enabling ordinances and this kind of stuff. But we will put that together.
The airport, I mean, a nice growth over the last five years, you know, a little dip down in 2010, but a nice, strong position. $2.7 million against $2 million in expenditures annually gives Eric plenty of cushion for the capital projects because a lot of them being grant-dependent means that he has to do the work and pay the vendors and then wait to be reimbursed. So he's got an excellent cash position there. The marina, you know, this is what we talked about yesterday. When we took on that debt service initially back in 2009, we had a fine grant, and that grant paid the debt service for three years in a row. That first year that it dropped out and didn't pay it anymore is the year you see where the, the balance dipped down, and that restricted balance at year end is because the debt service comes due every October the 1st. So as of October the 30th, I mean, September the 30th, your restricted cash balance is your, your debt service payment that's due the following day. But you can see that with the reductions in expenditures and the attention that, that Tim has paid to the marina, he's starting to climb out of that hole. And if you look at the capital program I put together, I believe within the two or three-year timeframe, he'll end every year with sufficient cash to have that next day's debt service payment covered, plus free cash. So he's kind of bringing himself back out of that once that dip down happened from the lack of the loan. Solid Waste, another great story. I mean, we're looking at essentially in 2009, no cash and investments balance, up to $471,000 in unrestricted cash because there's no outstanding debt in, in solid waste. And as a result of that last two years, Monty, as he showed you, has been able to start a capital replacement program with cash and with leases because he's, he's got the wherewithal now and a good, comfortable balance.
The council went back to him and said, hey, we need to increase these rates so that we're not borrowing money for trucks, you know? And we could start putting reserves and have that available.
Exactly. And I think we first had that conversation back in the summer of 2011. And you can see in just the course of two years, the action that's been taken to improve that. And then lastly, I think recreation tells the story of why it belongs in the general fund. You know, the 217 and some of these residual balances, even at the end of 2013, were really just sitting there for a few of the capital projects, like, like the tennis court resurfacing. They really weren't much free cash for operations. And when you talk about almost $2 million a year in expenditures and cash of $50,000, again, that doesn't belong as an enterprise fund. It's not showing any, any signs of being one. And so this was the last year we were proposing.
Never be self-sustaining.
Thank you very much. Yes, it was very helpful.
Jim? Well, we're on to the electric, and as you know, this is a transition department in the fact that the sale has sort of stalled at this point. So what we're doing now is working on the concept that I think the council has espoused in several times, try to drive our rates down. Have you noticed in this budget, the, we've eliminated some positions in that department. Unfortunately, labor is a very small component of this electric utility. The real issue is going to be our contracts for power supply. We have been in contact with both FPNL and OUC to talk about modifications to some of our contracts, and we're, we're working through that as we speak. At the same time, Tom has been in touch with OUC and FPNL as well, and will be in the process of submitting our application to do the transmission study. FPNL will have to provide that for us. But we're trying to get as much information as we can on our transmission. Tom can espouse on this much greater than I can, obviously. But really, so we know the fundamentals that may have to be invested in order to meet these transmission issues. But Tom and Ted are here. Any questions you have, or guys, do you have an overview you want to give?
Yeah, I just want to expand a little bit on what Jim said. We are looking at alternatives to the current operation now with a different kind of a perspective where we realize the FPL sale is stalled, if you want to call it that, and that we're kind of stuck until that either is resolved one way or the other, trying to make plans that will work either way. So we're trying to come up with some, some plans that would look at the possibility of reducing our power plant generation costs and our purchase power costs. Those are where the big, the big dollars are. And those would include reduction in the hours of operation, reduction in the units available, retiring all the units, putting them in mothballs, all kinds of alternatives we're looking at. Our sense is that there's some money to be saved there. But as Jim says, until we can actually put some real numbers on paper, it's hard for me to bring you a proposal and say, here's a better plan for us, and here's what you're, what we think you're gonna save. And then, you know, my obstacles are mostly logistical at this point in terms of the restrictions we have with the FPL sales agreement that say we keep our, everything pretty much as is. We have to get them to agree in writing that we can look at some alternatives, and they're okay with that. And also our OUC power sales contract, which does say that we'll keep our power plant in operating condition. We'll need to go back and modify that. I don't have an indication that they won't go along with those kind of things, but we're just trying to get those lined up. So that's kind of the next step at this point.
So Tom, we have received a letter from FPL saying that, yeah, that they would work with us in any way to help us do whatever to, to lower our rates in the interim.
Was that a letter or was it an email?
We, we did get a letter from them, from Amy. And also, it was, we've received a similar type of document from OUC. Now we've got to do the specifics of that because OUC says, oh yes, they are, appear to be-
True. We're in the details.
Ready, don't, yeah. And then so, and then FPNL says, well, you know, we don't want to waive our rights in case the sale, if we find an option for the sale. So we, we are working through that. Wayne and I have been in touch with our attorneys, and we've been passing, they've been passing correspondence and discussions.
And next Tuesday, we'll get some sort of a status report from the attorney about where that whole process you just-
Yeah, Chef should be here at the council meeting on Tuesday.
So we'll know where we are in that regard.
And, and he is our, still our point of contact, making, touching base. John Igoe is still part of the formula and has input into all the discussions, obviously, since he helped put together the contract.
Jim, where are we on the RFP that we talked about, Jim and Cindy both, for that matter, and Tom?
You're talking about the rate sufficiency study and the optimization study.
That's correct.
And we have drafts that we're working on. I don't, from my end, I'm doing the rate structure study. You know, I'm thinking we might be able to pull it together for the August agenda, for you to review it and maybe approve it for release, unless we need to take it to both finance and utilities before we bring it to you, in which case that would probably add, make it the September timeframe, just to schedule their meetings, so.
Also, in that study, we're going to try to make it as, as broad as possible because when we start talking about optimization study, we need to have them sort of give us some insight as to the transmission, as an example, if we can get that transmission study back so they can, we have a third party to do an overview of that. And we have some internal substation ideas and issues that we, we will work through. Fortunately, we have some FMPA studies that I think that Tom has gotten a hold of that gives us a little bit better insight as to where we are internally.
As far as how we proceed today, I was gonna propose, I've got three or four questions on the revenue side, but I, I think as far as the revenue coming in and the cost for the power that we buy, those, those will come out of the RFP and the rate study and so on, and we should probably wait until that happens. In other words, you could look at it and say, well, you know, this number is either high or low, as the case may be. But I, I don't think it's useful, and we'll let the professionals do it.
Right now, it's, it's not using the-
Yeah, I know.
... sufficiency that we've done, and Tom's, you know, best estimate of the power cost. But as we know, at this point in the budget season, a lot of times, he doesn't have full information.
What I'm saying is, what I'm proposing to council is we accept the revenue numbers and the costs associated, whether it's from FMPA or OUC or wherever, as they are in the budget, because I think we're gonna get a better look at that later on. That's all I'm saying. It's just a proposal.
It's the best we've got right now.
It's the best we've got.
Mr. Mayor, we don't plan to do any recommendations of rate adjustments unless something dramatic happens-
I understand.
-in OUC until we have that rate study, at least down the line where somebody can give us projections.
And yet, we're looking at this budget, and we've got a, a seven and a, seven and a half percent increase in power costs, Tom?
That's, was the initial indication. I do think that's gonna come down. We do have a little bit more information from OUC last week, for example, that will bring that cost down. Part of that increase is due to a growth in sales of about 2%. So some of that seven and a half percent is actually sales and units. The rest of it was just based on their first cut at what the costs are gonna be. I think we can tweak that a little bit. It'll take us another 30 days probably to get that in some kind of shape.
Okay. And what I'm seeing on the FMPA budget side is that Stanton 1 is gonna be at $129.88 per hour.
Whatever we take, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, again, those are pretty rough, and a lot of times, they have a true-up in their-
Certainly, yeah. And whether they blend and whether they decide to shut that down or not. I realize that that, you know, that one number isn't there. But I mean, that's still before you put any, you know, any of our costs on.
When they're, when they're that expensive and they don't have the volume, they don't, they don't pull from them.
But we're still paying.
Other volume, they go down.
Yeah, but we're still paying.
We're paying the fixed costs, yes.
We're still paying all the fixed costs.
But it's not at 123.
It's the problem. We always have putting this budget together. When you think about, we put this together a month ago, essentially, and we really don't have the information to look at some of it.
Yeah. I understand that.
And, and really, if you take Stanton 1 and the months that it's run, there have been several months that it's run 85 or 87 when it was running. I, I don't think that's the conversation for today. I really don't. I mean, I, I understand there's a major problem with Stanton and Stanton 2, but let's, let's cross that bridge later.
We can't resolve any of this.
We can't resolve it today.
We have to put something in here to give you a budget. We do the best we can with the information we have. It's so premature.
Well, last year, we, we amended the budget, what, three or four times? Or three times?
You know, what we've done the last two years with this electric utility is done the best we can during the budgeting process with the information we have, and then begun immediately on October the 1st, relying on the numbers in the rate sufficiency, which don't, the revenues and, and projected expenditures don't necessarily match the budget because by the time we do that in October, Tom has some good information on, on what it's really going to be. So that's, that's kind of what we've done the last couple of years. We didn't amend the budget. We just sort of, the only parts of the budget that mattered were the operating costs that we could control. And then we abandoned those and used the real data.
They're gonna change several times throughout the year.
No, these are all just projections based on early-released numbers that we have gotten. The fact of the matter is, is I don't think OUC has a fixed cost for, let's say, January. I mean, they, they still have, they have to buy off the market as well, especially when they priced their Stanton plant at $129. In our mind, that means that they really don't plan to run that. What they want to do is buy off the market and take advantage of gas prices and this type of stuff. We still have the fixed cost, but we also get some of the benefit of their market purchase. So, so it has that as a variable.
And if I recall, yeah, we really didn't get any clear numbers from OUC until about October, you know? So, I mean, it was- So, I mean, it was, we were, yeah.
And one of the things Tom talked about when the OUC made the presentation at the Utility Commission, we had an issue with their capacity and that 2% increase and how that was increasing our cost. OUC assured us they would go back and revisit some of those numbers.
They have done that. I've got those numbers, but I haven't had a chance to put them in the forecast yet. So they're in our favor.
If we can move to page 89, it's got revenue on it, and I wasn't going to deal with the major items in light of the conversation we just had. But the customer service, water and sewer, 425, I understand it. Basically, what's happening is $200,000 more is being charged to the other funds, but it's still being cleared through electrical, is that the...
Yes, because the customer service department is under the electric utility. So we have the full cost of the customer service here, and then we allocate portions of it out to water and sewer and solid waste.
A rhetorical question, and I'm not really on with that, but should it really be, or should it really be under finance or some other place? I mean, I don't know.
Functionally, it actually is under the finance department, so I'm the department director for it, but because the bulk of the activity is an electric utility function, from an accounting standpoint, it's easier to account for it here and then give it out to the people that it belongs to. If it was under finance, it'd have to go in the general fund and then be costed out, which would really kind of skew things, so.
Good question on the R and R, and...
Where are you?
I'm back on page 88, just on the summary page, and we may go through that bit more when we're looking at capital programs, but I guess just wanted to comment, I mean, that, you know, we know we're going to have continually more maintenance, and yet we're reducing our R and R from 3.4 million to 3 million, and that concerns me.
What we did a couple of years ago, and it is easier to see when we look at the capital, is we made every attempt, and I think we've done a good job, to sort of level off our R and R transfers, so that in some years, there's a balance forward for the next year when there might be a bigger project. In the past, it was sort of like, you know, it was a million one year, it was eight the next, and it was one, and six, and so we've leveled it off. And when you look at the five-year CIP, that three to three and a half million dollars, I think it goes down to 2.8, really gives us a level transfer that keeps a steady amount of money in there for the projects that Tom and Ted have planned.
And actually, the work that can get done, I think historically speaking, if you put a lot of money in there, we never were able to get those many projects done. And so now, we're trying to get realized money that Ted and Tom are actually going to...
We could physically accomplish in one year, yeah.
It doesn't impact rigs. We don't want to just make it 6 million for a ton.
Absolutely.
It's not actually going to get extended.
Okay, on 88 and 89, the only one I understand it, it's the $134,000, which is the return of the health insurance that we were talking about earlier. Any other comments on 88 or 89? If you go back to 109, there's some more revenue. I don't know, that I was curious about. One is contribution from electric work, which is the very first on page 109. I don't know what it is.
This actually, if you look, is a separate fund. All of the electric operating is 401, and this is 403. So this is actually the capital fund, and that contribution from the electric fund is the 3 million that we transfer from the operating side and non-departmental into the capital fund. So this is the totally, this is the capital R and R fund.
But the contribution, electrical work, I see...
Oh, the electrical work, that, who, talk to me about that one. It's contractors that pay us, or, you know, different things like that.
That could be like electricians that reimburse...
Electricians that like reimburse for overtime hours?
But, for instance, when you go out on the weekend and do something for someone off schedule, and they reimburse you for it.
After hours, yeah.
Okay, and the only other one on that particular page is the electrical impact fees. I understand what they are, but you might explain to the public what they are.
He wants to explain impact fees.
It's impact fees that...
Yeah, but I know it comes out of Cindy's department, but impact fees are based off panel size. There's a calculation involved with that, and it's all set by customer service.
So these are new construction that were...
Correct, new hookups.
Where you're, we're entitled, the utility is entitled.
That's correct.
That is correct. What we're doing is, for example, one of the most recent was a medical dental office, and he was upgrading and expanding his service and needed a larger transformer, he wanted a transformer relocation and some of these other things. And so this is covered through the impact fees.
I have no further revenue questions, as anyone else?
My assumption is they're restricted.
Yes, they are restricted. And it really is related directly back, more than likely, to the project that they're doing.
Okay, on page 92, there's one here that probably takes some, well, wait a second here, professional services. Where is it? 91, professional, oh, I skipped a page ahead. That's what I've done. Professional service, which is about halfway down the page in 91, is 661. This probably takes some thought. I mean, it's the cost of the lawyers that we have now, and it's the cost of whatever we have to do to work with OUC and Florida Power and Light.
Probably rate study and optimization study, and all of that would come out of professional services as well.
And beyond that, also, and I've said this before, and I don't know that there's general agreement, but I think with where we are, that we have to, we have to plan for a future where this utility is retained with local ownership. And so there's going to have to be a lot of thought there, and I'm not wise enough to know what the thought is. But one of the things that I think we have to be concerned with, if the utility is controlled locally, with lowering rates as much as possible. The second thing is to protect the assets and return on the assets. In other words, the utility is owned by the city, therefore, it's owned by the people of the city, and they're entitled to return, which we talked about, the 6%. I don't know that that's the long-term best way of doing it, but that's maybe later in the morning. And the third thing is, how do we govern this thing into the future? And I personally believe that we should look at and consider alternate methods of governance. In other words, we should consider what many other utilities do, Fort Pierce or Orlando or a great many more, and consider how we would have it governed by some sort of a board or an authority, rather than by city council. I think it's, it would take it out of, more out of politics. Nothing's out of politics in this life.
No, I disagree completely. It's not going to take it out of politics. It'd just be another political entity.
And it takes it out of your local control. If you're saying, if you truly believe that the utility is a property of the city residents and of the city of Vero Beach, then it should be under the control of the city.
Well, nothing says it necessarily outside the control of the city. In other words, Orlando Public Utilities is, the city has a great deal of control. And if you look at the mechanisms of the many utilities across the state, they're very, very broad as to what any particular governing board can do, and how much control the city has. That's why I gave you, Mr. Turner, the second thing. You know, if the, if the return on the assets is protected, so that we know that there's a dividend, it really is a dividend, then, you know, there can be flexibility. In other words, we could include on this board, there could be county people, as the case may be, who are part of the rate group. I just believe that we should at least not just say no, but we should look at what other people across the state of Florida are doing, because we're a little bit unique in that the city council is still running this business or setting the policy to run it. Really, Tom and Ted and Jim are running it. And our history hasn't been that good. And I think we can structure it in a way where the owners are protected, but in such a way that we can have better governance and more efficient operations. And I don't think we should just say no. I mean, I'm not wise enough to know who would be on a governing board, what their powers would be. In some cities, the mayor or the city manager is on the board. There are all different parameters, but I am uncomfortable into the future with a system whereby city council, who has signed the FMPA agreements, the OUC agreements, the Florida Power and Light agreements, that politicians carry this forward. And just to say no, that there's not a better governing system than the one I believe has failed, I don't think that's the right thing.
You just want to shed political responsibility off of your shoulders and onto somebody else's.
Well, we're not going to be...
You just want to shove it off to the side somewhere. We were elected to run this thing.
We're not, we're not, you and I are not, maybe the younger ones will be here, but you and I are not going to be here anyway, because the process of determining governance would probably take a year and a half or two years. I guess I'm more worried that you and I won't be here, really, frankly.
Just as a comment, I think in our optimization study, that that ought to be an element that we ask the consultant to look at. I think it would be one.
Yeah, it certainly creates more cumbersome, more bureaucracy and another level, keeping the management away from the ratepayers itself. It's intruding another group, and I...
But hopefully, we'll bring in a firm that has experience in both types of utilities and that would give us, you know, a pretty good perspective if, in fact, there are better decisions made out of the utility authority, or, you know, it's the same end result.
Emphasis on experience.
Exactly.
Well, the point being that you'd have a utility authority is just taking the politics out of it. You know, I've said to a number of people, when it takes just, you know, $3,000 or $4,000 to buy a city council seat, it's just a matter of time before somebody decides to come in, pour a little bit of money, and then sell a multimillion-dollar utility off to anybody who wants it. And quite frankly, I think that's what's been happening the last four years. And I'd like to find a way that we make sure that we have a system in place that either fairly sells it off or fairly runs the thing. Quite frankly, if city council can run the thing, they can run it into the ground to force a sale, or they can run it right. But the truth of the matter is, we don't pay attention to the market forces that are needed to run this utility correctly. We need to find a structure where it can be professionally run and be insulated from the politics.
It's professionally run now. We have professionals running it right now.
Well, the professionals really have to come to us. I mean, quite frankly, we signed an FPNL deal that just tied their hands. We haven't been able to professionally run this thing for the last four years. So you're saying these people are not professionals? I'm saying that we're not allowing them to be professionals.
Yes, we are.
I'd say, take a look at other utility authorities. When you've got, you know, painting contractor on the utility authority, those kind of people, I mean, how that utility authority is made up and the qualifications of them, as I said, it's putting another step in between the people. Go talk to Fort Pierce and see how happy they are with their utility authority.
They're not.
They're not. I've talked to their, to their city manager, whatever. It's not responsive. It's put another step between them. If the ratepayers don't like how we're running the utility, we're voted out of office, Mr. Kramer. So, I mean, the response is there.
That's not true. You know, there's a lot of ratepayers that are outside the city limits that don't vote us out of office. You know, the good thing about having a municipal utility is that it's the ratepayers that decide who run the utility. And right now, that's broken. You know, in a utility authority, you know, the county can have three votes and we would have two votes. They could run the system. We would still get our return, but they could run the system.
And yet, when we tried to put more county residents on the utility commission, y'all objected. You wanted, the utility commission had to be a majority of city residents. So, you know, I'm having a disconnect here with this.
They had an agenda.
Well, look, we won't resolve it today, nor will we resolve it at all, because it'll be resolved by the public over the next term, several elections and so on. But I do think what Jim's proposal was, which I'll ask him to repeat, is a good one. And I think what we do is, we look at alternatives, and they come out in the public, and, you know, I think we should do what the public wants us to do. And that includes more than the just, I'm very concerned that the city owners, their assets be protected, but I'm also concerned that all of the ratepayers have a voice in this thing. And there's a way, there may be a way of doing that, there may not. So Jim, what's your proposal?
Mine is, is when we do the rate optimization study, we have them look at all facets, governance just being one of those elements, and I think governance would be some, that is a critical part of how we make decisions. But to have that optimization, and again, finding a consultant that has experience on both sides of the equation, I think would be very critical, so we'll make that part of our elements.
So, and back to where I started, is 661 the right number, and it would take, it would take the wisest man in the world to know, because we have ongoing costs, we're going to have costs of whatever it legally takes to deal with mothballing the plan, if that's the way we end up. There's lots of costs here.
It's also a very wise woman as well.
And just to point out, the 661 is not the number. That's a roll-up of the entire utility. So the part we're talking about is back in non-departmental on 107, and what we've budgeted for next year is 500,000. The other 161 are ongoing, you know, professional services related to the operation of the utility. So 500 grand is the number that we have in there for transactional attorneys and the kinds of studies and optimization that you're talking about, so.
Well, I'm not smart enough to say you're wrong.
I think it's as good a number as any.
161, that's not part of that, so.
Just clarifying, on 92, the general fund administration charge, this is the increase due to the inventory. We've got a 7.2% increase in that charge. That's primarily due to the inventory employee that we added.
The extra warehouse person, that's, yeah, that's a big part of it.
Okay, just wanted to...
On that same page, you have under tool and shop equipment, a 500% increase. Do I see that broken down somewhere, what you're doing? It's also on page 104, under tool or shop equipment maintenance, 500% increase.
I honestly think just this is a suggestion, and this particular utility, the roll-up is kind of hard to look at. It's probably better to go department by department, and there you can see which department the increase popped out in, which will, I think, also make it easier for Ted and Tom to explain it, because the roll-up is all five or six departments, and it's hard to see which one caused the increase. So I would suggest, if you want to look at the individual departments, start with page 95, and then look at the increases and decreases there, rather than the roll-up.
I've got one on the bottom of page 92, though, which will pop up someplace else, I'm sure, but it's $290,000 for oil. What do we want oil for?
This, again, if we look at it department, this is a charge in the fuel and purchase power department. We have not, in the past, budgeted for burning the oil that it takes to generate power ourselves, and we always have an expense every year, so Tom's included an actual budget for this.
Yeah, but we already own the oil, don't we?
It's sitting as an asset in inventory. When it gets consumed, it transfers into an expense.
Then, let's just think about that for a minute, because we don't want to, it would be correct to say we don't want to burn oil, we don't want to buy any oil, correct?
Right, we are. We burn an awful lot of it. Yeah, you know, maybe a quart of a tank out there, that's fine for our needs for right now. We only burn it on rare occasion, either for testing or for some rare occasions when the gas is not available and they need us to run the gas turbine. And do recall, we only have one type of oil on site now. We've gotten rid of the heavy oil. We only have light oil that will only operate in unit five.
Which of the tanks is the oil in, the front or the back? Smaller one?
Yeah, the smaller one. It's the 1 million tank, which is more west, east, westerly, I believe.
But we're not going to buy any more oil, right?
I don't intend to buy any more oil.
Thank you.
I've got one question that I'll go through the other ones as well, but it's on tools and instruments, and I guess I'm concerned, are we having a theft or loss problem with our tools and instrument?
What page are you looking at?
I'm just looking generally at 93. It's 138% increase in tools and instrument. It kind of goes, it filters through in all the department areas, and I'm, just a question.
Well, I will tell you that mine did go up. That's just due to, you know, the guys needed tools. They haven't had any in years.
Okay.
They're just old and just need to be replaced.
Okay, but it's not like we have two things...
No, not at all.
Thank you. I know we haven't been spending much money on those kind of things, Ted, so I'm just...
Right, and that's exactly what it is.
All right, if we go on to page 95, power resources, which is really generation, correct?
Correct.
If you...
We have purchase power.
Yeah, okay. If you look at salaries, you're running it more than your running rate, but, and then if you look at your maintenance salaries, they're actually going up, and then the overtime salaried... And then the overtime salaries are running at a rate of $85,000. I guess why do we need overtime? And why are the salaries so high in a facility we don't use very often?
The current just get impacted by turnover because when we make a sick and vacation payout, it impacts the salary line on them. So there has been some turnover. That would be part of the current year issue. And in terms of the overtime, I would defer to Tom.
Why overtime?
There's overtime built into the schedule. Overtime occurs typically when, because of our 40-hour work week with hourly employees, they have, they can't, if they work more than 40 hours a week, we have to pay them overtime. So typically, the schedule's set up so that they don't work more than 40 hours, even though they may be working rotating shifts. So we have relief operators, and if they're available, they work on straight time. If they're not, then we call in somebody on overtime. In addition, when we're operating the units, we typically have to call in extra people to help operate units because we're so short-staffed. And finally, just to cover sick and vacation leave, if we can't, you know, operate with two people on a shift if we need to, typically when we're not running, but if we need a third or fourth person, we'll call somebody in on overtime. So it's pretty typical to have this in a 24/7 operation, have some overtime built in as opposed to having additional employees. The actual maintenance salaries for this year are low because we're a short one, maintenance technician. We're trying to fill that slot and not having a lot of luck. But at this point, we're, we have a budget next year for maintenance that's higher than our current.
Mr. Mayor, just for information, we have been running the units here just recently. When it got up over the 90 degree, it seemed like they called us on, so we-
How much at a time? That's interesting.
Oh, I think we ran three or four days last week.
Which units do you run?
Typically, the combined cycle mills running.
Running, okay.
Yeah, running fine.
Tom, can you go back to the, I'm still trying to get a picture of the personnel issue that we have here. And looking at our book, you had, last year, we had a budgeted at 28 positions. It's showing that we're down to 27. This decrease was due to resignation?
We had one retirement in the-
Retirement, okay.
In the operating area, and we promoted up the ranks, so we filled the operations positions, leaving one of the bottom ones open, and we decided to eliminate that going forward.
Okay, so it was in the operator. So then, you said you still have, you have an open position that's currently not filled? That's why I was getting confused.
That's a maintenance technician. It is open, it is budgeted.
Okay.
It's carried in the budget. We just have trouble filling it.
Thank you.
This is going to, it could vary widely depending upon what Tom recommends and what comes back in the study, right? In other words, these numbers are presuming everything is as it is when it's going to change. We don't know how, but it will.
That is correct. I mean, if, for example, it came back and we could run two shifts as opposed to three shifts because of our running time, then obviously you're going to reduce some of these numbers by their round numbers. But your overtime may go up because when you start running, if you run for three or four days and you only have two shifts, you'll probably be paying overtime and splitting 12-hour shifts as opposed to the way that we do it now.
Jim, do you and Tom have, are you working on any plan in the meantime to keep the cost of the plant as low as possible? You mentioned two shifts a minute ago. Will you be coming forward with something in September or something, or what are you, what are you thinking about?
We are thinking of doing those cost reductions. Tom and I have talked extensively about it. It could include, as Tom pointed out earlier, taking a couple of the units completely offline, so therefore we wouldn't have to worry about those. I've shown you all the two on unit three, how it sort of blew out up there. We don't plan to invest any more money in that. But we still have the obligation of two and five. Unit four is the one that we use as our real backup because it's the third most reliable of the units. And we would really need to have an understanding with OUC because even though it may not be specifically in the contract, we do have an obligation for X amount of capacity that we, you know, just as a utility have to have. But yes, we are looking at all of those options and trying to figure out how do we, what are the real needs of the plant? And it was just sort of ironic that when we started talking about this in real earnest, Tom comes to me and tells me we've been on mine for three days, and so it's-
Well, look at it this way, the total cost of the plant is budgeted $4.1 million.
The mayor, to answer your question, let's say that we found that our transmission upgrades would cost us $5 million. We amortized that over a bond issue, and it comes out to $500,000. Let's say we could lock in a capacity charge for the next five years at $1,000,002. At $1,007,000 would be our number that we would gauge against the $4 million. That's sort of the way we're looking at it and trying to make sure that we quantify what it is that we're gauging against each other. We don't think in any of the wildest worlds that we're going to be able to get a capacity contract unless it's very expensive beyond that five-year timeframe because we have one beyond the five-year timeframe, and you see where we are in that. So we're looking at that as the horizon, and more than likely, when we come to you all with the recommendation as to what we do and how we facilitate the operation of the plant, it's going to be based on a relatively short window, and you, as the governing body, will be taking the risk because six years out, there could be high demand, low capacity, somebody's got to pay.
But Jim, you know, being a commodity guy, you can never be, afford to be caught wrong with the market. And I don't think, I think you're exactly on, I think going longer than five years on any commodity, including electrons, in any contract is a mistake. And if we're caught wrong, we're caught wrong, but we're still on the market, and we don't look like, we look, have looked. So I endorse no longer than five years.
But we're still stuck with our 20 years at OUC and have to modify that one because those are still the base capacity of what we operate with, the capacity we're talking about replacing with the plant, really is that reserve capacity that is an obligation if we have to provide it. And historically speaking, that's about 2% of the year.
Screaming right along the speed of dark. What page are we on?
We're on page 95, Craig. I've got the same one you do, I think, which is-
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Vehicle maintenance. I see a sudden drop. Did you get rid of a, did you get rid of a vehicle or something?
That comes to us from the garage. That's the rest of it.
That's your-
Based on their records and their operation, that comes to Monty's area.
That's the, kind of the redistribution we talked about.
Also, your utilities are at a running rate of 24. You weren't here, but what I do is I take the general ledger and I just straight-line it. So utilities are 60?
Yeah, typically, those are related mostly to the water, water sewer charges, and we'll run more in the summertime, so we'd expect to have our heaviest used in the summer these months coming up. That'll be, so it's not really linear.
And we have $25,000 of schools and meetings, which, in this particular unit, what are we, what are we doing there?
Well, we have, again, we have some new people. We have, I thought, some turnover, and we're trying to get them up to speed, especially in the environmental area so that we can manage our own reporting and analysis and troubleshooting. And in order to do that, they have to be sent away for a week to Texas or someplace. And those are very expensive schools.
Okay, and the last one on that page is, it's just a lot, it's a lot of money, but you're actually spending more than that at this rate is the environmental and pollution.
Yeah, that primarily is due to the fact that we lost our manager support services, and for a period of a quarter there, we paid our software, pollution software vendor, extra money to actually prepare our reports for us to send, the quarterly reports sent to the EPA. So there was an extra charge that we don't anticipate going forward.
Okay. Any more on 95?
Are those school and training, is those certifications state-required certifications, or are they just industry-required certifications?
There are a little bit of a mix of everything. Some of it's primarily related to state and federal requirements for-
Environmental?
Environmental. And some of it's certifications we have on our job descriptions for our operators.
Oh, okay.
And some of those get training that way, and we pay for that. And those are good things for them to have.
Cindy, on transfers, on page 96, this is transfer for maintenance of the plant, or?
That's actually not the capital fund, but the small R and R fund, 405, that you'll see a few pages back. Over the last few years, they've built up a little bit of a reserve there, so we lowered the transfer.
I was looking at, it was going down.
Yeah, yeah, they've got a little, little built-up reserve, so we lowered it to cover the shares. If you want to, unless you have any questions, I mean, we can, we can answer them on customer service. This is the, kind of the one we talked about yesterday, and I've got a little breakout if you're interested, as to what the three functions are in that department and how we allocate them out to the other, to the other utility entities, so I'm going to pass those down. Might be one in there that's got something stable to it. There is, guess, send it back. Basically, there's three elements to the customer service department. There's what you think of as the customer service department, which is the face-to-face interface that our customers have and also on the phone with all of our utility customers, water and sewer and electric, et cetera. One point of clarification, the cashiers who take the money are not part of the customer service department, they are part of the finance department. From an internal control standpoint, there's a very bright line between the people that take money and the people that are able to adjust or modify bills. And so those are really two separate entities, and those customers, the cashiers in the windows are not part of customer service. The other thing that's part of the customer service budget is the actual cost for our billing system, the software maintenance, the postage, and all the things associated with actually rendering the bills to about 33,000 customers. And finally, the third component of customer service are the meter readers for both electric and water and sewer, as well as our field personnel. In the last couple of years, we've made some modifications to the organizational structure. We used to have two or three people that were focused on just field work, including energy audits and trouble tickets for excess usage, and we've really flipped that around and put more meter readers and some senior meter readers with the ability to go out and handle the trouble tickets and that sort of thing. But we, you know, kind of brought the top heaviness of the organization down. If you look at the total amount, you know, this is just a sidelight, and this is some of the conversation we had on the SWAT with the Finance Commission about this component of our operation. You're talking 33,000 electric meters roughly and 11,000 water sewer, and a total expenditure for reading all those of $500,000 a year, which comes out to less than a dollar a meter per month. And I think Tom had indicated that's a, that's a pretty excellent number. What we then do is I took these three elements and I've broken them out, and then based on the number of bills rendered, the number of meters read, I've allocated those costs to water and sewer and solid waste. And again, those allocations have gone up a little by pegging the allocations to a little more objective numbers instead of just, yeah, hey, how about this much? So this is an area where, we talked about it with the Finance Commission, we have and we'll bring them, some cost-benefit analysis, and then it'll come forward to you. We have some plans with regard to how to automate this, upgrade our interface with our customers, starting with the cashiers and some things like e-box and lockbox, and ultimately, depending on the outcome of the sale, ending with a really good web-based interface for customer service where you could do the kinds of things you can do on the FPNL website, for instance, pay bills, start auto-payments, paperless statements, and every one of those things we're able to do will bring these costs down. You know, paperless statements, we have $185,000 a year in postage. And so it will take, you know, a year or so. One of the things we'll talk about in the capital program is a proposal to upgrade our billing software for starters and give it more capability. But, you know, we're hoping over the year to the two-year timeframe to really modernize our customer service offerings to match the current demographic. I mean, you know, frankly, the average person now wants to pay their bills online on the night or the weekend and not, you know, need so much actual personal interaction with customer service. However, we do want to keep that component of it. That kind of makes us, I think, a little extraordinary in the amount of customer service and personal interface that we deliver, so we're going to try to strike a balance between being responsive and then giving people the products that they want.
I'd still like to see that providing improved and expanded service as a number-one goal. I think, yeah, the improve our billing, payment system, receipt of that, I think the customer service ought to be our top priority.
It is, it's one of those things that just takes time as you start making modifications to your billing software and then rolling into that new capabilities like bank interfaces and e-box and lockbox and website portals. You have to have a really good schedule, a lot of project management, and proceed carefully. The last thing in the world you want is an interruption to billing. At the, yeah, at the end of the day, the bills still have to go out correctly every month, but we're kind of excited about the possibilities. I also have my customer service manager, Janet Roberts, is here in case you have any specific questions she can answer.
Also, the 80/20 rule that you often hear about, we exceed that. We're more like the 90/10 rule, where 10% of the customers are the ones that really use a lot of the elaborate services we have, and 90% are the ones paying for it. So that's one of the reasons we feel like that we can scale down some of, some of that customer service without really impacting the majority, the great majority of our customers.
All right, page 100, Pilar, do you have?
Ted, just, yeah, we've got a reduction of four people in TND. Can you tell us that retirement, resignations?
That was just vacant positions.
Vacant, open positions that you're no longer closing, okay.
But they were budgeted positions.
Right.
Vacant budgeted positions that are no longer being-
Correct.
And if you go to the, the next page, 101, your salary budget has gone down $300,000 in roundest terms.
Correct.
Will that work?
It, I'm going to try it for a year. I think I should be okay. Hopefully, I'll come back next year and ask for another person, but I think I'll be fine.
Are we still able to get the lights back on?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we're fine.
And of course, part of it is the maintenance salary has gone up 200 of the 300 you went down. The one down below, it's 772 to 995.
That, that was actually a, we've had this a couple of times, that was a shift to match the way the payroll system actually disperses the salaries versus the way that they were coded in the budget, just to make reality match the budget, which is always a good thing, so.
What a concept.
What a concept. Otherwise, we have built-in variances all the time because payroll is assigning them to one line item, and they're in a different one in the budget, so we did a little cleanup on that. Ted noticed that when he looked at the budget.
Your overtime, you're actually going to be stretched to do what you're running at a higher rate than that for what it's worth. I'm obviously not objecting because I would rather have your number than the 294 you're running, running rate.
Yeah, I'm going to be close on that, but I'll look at it again.
Well, I mean, you know, if it's wrong, it's wrong.
Well, speaking of Javier, yesterday, we ran the numbers, and I'll be like, probably $30,000 over, but I did make some changes in the organization that should cut some overtime out.
Okay.
And you've had a fair amount of turnover too, haven't you?
Right.
And you said that you're maintaining the TND system with a goal of checking at least 20%? Is that what we're, are we doing 20% now, or we have a higher?
It's about 25.
Okay, that's great. I wanted to know that number.
This isn't going to be another one of those warehouse issues where we cut too far and then we have to add back next year?
No.
That is, our goal is to find out what is that number, and it's, you know, we're working on the theory, and Ted and I have talked about this, is that it'd be better to come back and ask for another one than to have one that we're not utilizing. So we're sort of balancing that. And a lot of it is going to be contention also upon the callouts that we have and the service calls that we have. And so if that starts escalating for some reason, then we may have to come back to you. But we're still trying to find that fine balance of where we are. And the good thing about going back to the warehouse, the positive that we had in the reduction of people there, we really found out where our needs were because we were sort of spreading it over everybody, but we found through that painfully, they found in a year that they really needed that position back. So that same type of issue may arise in the electric, and it may be redistributed.
Well, I think that was the point I was trying to make because on the warehouse issue, we did push just a hair too far and caused a little bit of pain, and I don't know if we're doing the same thing here, and we're just going to find out where that limit's at.
These were just retirees that we just didn't, they were still funded, but we didn't, Right. Not linemen or anything, no.
Ted, on your professional services, you haven't spent, you spent next to nothing year-to-date, so I'm, what's the 50,000 for?
In case we have to do any projects with NERC or, well, most of that comes out of NERC, but we were going to do a relay study, and some of that would have came out, which we haven't had time to do it this year. We, we still may look forward to that, and I may use some of that this year before October.
You brought up, I guess, an issue that with NERC, and I understand there's some new security requirements coming out for municipal power plants and systems. Are, are we well poised to address those? Tom?
That's a.
I'm just worried Ted had done that one. Not well poised.
Yeah, that's a SIP compliance. We're, that comes up next year, so we're in place for it. I mean, we're looking at, you know, budgeting for it if we have to.
Okay.
But as far as that number this year, we're fine.
Anything more on 101?
Just to touch on that, Ted has made some progress in security, the relocation of our control system, doing the duplicate control.
Our backup, yeah.
The backup. So he has addressed some of those that we anticipate coming out in those NERC rules.
Anything more on 101? 102, some of these things, I don't even know what they are. Station equipment, you're, you know, running well, asking for more or budgeting more than you spent back in '12 and '13, which is what you're going to spend this year, maybe.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, just tell us that you need it, that's all.
Oh, I definitely need it. Which, which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at.
I need it. It is, we need it.
Well, no, I mean, you said station, you said, I'm sorry, you said.
That wasn't the right way to answer the question.
Well, I'm not going to ask for one unless I do not need it. But you said station equipment, correct?
Right.
Twenty-six, you like that? Yeah, we do plan on spending some of that for substations, switches and arresters and.
102, anything else? I have nothing. 103, I have nothing. Does anybody?
Nope.
I guess we answered her there.
104, does anybody have any? 105, going, going, gone. 106, 107, a couple.
One I would point out here at the bottom of the page is the $1.1 million in debt service that's gone as a direct result of your approval of paying off that loan, so.
And of course, the professional service, your, your wisdom of Solomon, 500,000, that's where it is. Oh, it's his fault. Now, if it's wrong, it's going to be Jim's fault, right? Oh, I see, okay. I don't have anything more in the, in the expense of revenues. We have a lot of capital. Are we ready to move on to capital, or? Okay.
Before we move on to capital, just, yeah, for background, I pulled the 209 budget. Interesting facts, our electric rate at that time was $158.82 in 2009.
That was a record.
In our electric fund, looking at our, our capital costs, we were, capital projects were almost $15 million that year, projected to be 10, 9, and 8 for the next four years. So you could see what a, a much higher level of capital projects that were being done at that time, or forecasted.
That's where that fund balance dipped.
Yeah.
We were doing undergrounding during that time, weren't we, just finishing that up?
Yeah, we were doing conversions on that, at that time.
I guess we're on page 49, or we might be better to go through each one. What do you think, Greg? I think we, we probably would be.
Pausing briefly on page 49, though. I know Ted had shown me, we're back on the individual pages, descriptive pages. We typoed one of these projects to be 3 million or something. But on, on the overall spreadsheet that actually governs how much carryforward we have, it's 300,000, not 3 million. That's the overhead conductors on page 50. So the typo on the individual descriptive sheet has no effect on the actual year-end balance because in the spreadsheet that calculates the carryforward, it's the correct number of 300,000. Yeah, it, it wasn't wrong there. It was wrong on the backups. Unfortunately, we didn't just find $2.7 million. That's the bad news.
I don't have any questions until page 54, and I probably don't have any questions there because I now know that you're using it as your third best suit of clothes.
Kenny, you still comfortable with this R and R? I mean, we've gone from 3.8 and then we're projecting out it being, you know, 2 and 1/2?
If, if you look at the end of each fiscal year, at the bottom of 50, you know, what I kind of strive for is to make sure that it, it, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 20% of the projects planned for that year, which is headroom for change orders, and then you notice, you know, as it, it builds up that one year to about million five, because in one of those out years, we have some of the bigger projects. So we, you know, you, when you set it up in a spreadsheet like this and, and start taking into account the carryforward, it really helps. You can, you can sort of toy with these numbers till you have a nice, even dispersment every year, as opposed to having those wild swings when you're taking it out of rates. You just, you don't want 8 million to come out one year, as you pointed out in these old budgets, and then to the next. So we feel pretty comfortable with that. And I know Ted and Tom have done a great job of really looking at their capital needs, as, as Jim pointed out, particularly in the area of TND, where we typically budgeted a lot of money that we did not spend. So.
All right, page 51, I have nothing. Anyone? Page 53, or 52, 53? Page 54, we now know we need. Page 55. Page 50. 56, 57. I just wonder if, first of all, no one knows the million dollars for decommissioning the plant. I mean, you put a number in there, but I guess, I, I just wonder if the number should be, not this year, but moved to, part of it moved ahead some.
It's in 17, 18.
It's 17, 18. What I'm saying is, should it really be in 15, 16, or 16, 17, or some of it? That's all I'm saying.
I, I think that would be extremely optimistic. Now, we, I guess you could just stick it in 16, 17, but we've got quite a few steps to go, the transmission study being a major, and then acquiring the capacity, which, by the way, we may have to do the capacity before we can actually get the study done. And so we may have to have capacity under contract going forward. But those steps for the couple of years that we're talking about here is, is not very much time.
Okay.
And you're right, the million dollars, I think it's Tom's best guess based on.
It's a good placeholder. It's a good placeholder.
Get your attention. And that's what I want to do, is make sure that you understand that retiring a plant is not free. It will cost money.
And there is a difference between retiring and demolition.
Yes.
This would be mothballing for a million dollars.
Well, we haven't decided yet. Maybe, maybe not.
Maybe, maybe not, okay. Customer service technology, which we need, that's what you just talked about, Cindy, $160,000, which we've agreed to previously. Anyway, 59, light vehicles, we've already talked about that. 60, upgrade feeders. 61, switch gear rebuild, that's enough money to stop $900,000.
Yeah, and that's one of the questions you did ask me. That's substation 9, which is North Beach, and substation 11, which is down by the mornings for switch gear. There should have been backup, I'm sorry, I only got one, but this is the report, it indicates the findings. So, I mean, that's why we have to address it.
So we'll be able to cover both, substation 9 and 11, Ted, with this $900,000?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll give this to Tammy, and she can provide.
We'll add it to the next version of the book. We'll make sure it gets in here.
Just curious, well, it's just age that you're having to?
Age and deterioration. This is like 1972.
What about 10 at the Sun Trust?
We haven't had any trouble there yet. We did pull some new feeders in recently, but substation 10 has only got one transformer. So that's why we really have to address 9 and 11.
Yeah, I know you feed the middle from either end.
Yeah.
Okay. 62, test and calibrate relays. I have no questions. You have backup on that one?
I do.
64.
Holes. Correct.
65, overhead.
That's where that typo was?
Yeah.
Okay.
66, stop me, anyone, installation of conduit.
Stop me, please.
67, City of Vero Beach Electric Service Territory, a new construction. 68, pole pad mount. 69, new construction. 70. 71, outdoor lighting. I'll ask Pilar's question there as far as efficient lighting. That, you did, we're going to ask it, weren't you? Is, what are we doing as far as having the least energy?
Currently, right now, we are looking into LED lighting. We're just trying to get the prices back and then work with PSE on pricing. And so you can work on your payback. But we, we are looking into it.
Well, can we expect something to come forward this fall about where, what you're, where you're thinking about going and what the payback would be?
Oh, yeah. I'll bring something back by then. Actually, we have one in the system right now that we're trying out. To get some feedback from customers, yes.
Great.
You're the engineer, ask some more questions.
No, I think, yeah, it's good just to get a timeframe and say, hey, this is a priority that we want to, want to look for, you know, energy efficient fixtures.
Yeah, we started a couple months ago.
You know, and, and the thing about it is, something like this, if it costs more than $75,000, as long as it's got a payback, it's a good deal.
Right.
If it costs 150, you know, so be it. If it costs 200, if the payback is there, so be it.
And your maintenance is like very minimal.
Yeah, I mean, you know, don't, let's not be penny wise and pound foolish.
I agree.
To be terribly cliche.
Yeah, we, we answered your question. We are looking into it.
I have no further questions, but I don't know when anybody else does.
Got a question on page 72, on the OSHA requirements requiring replacement. This is on metering tools. We just have such antiquated tools there. They're not.
It is, yeah.
Latest OSHA standards.
And some new equipment, infrared guns. We're going to start doing our own hotspot checks, so we don't have to hire it out.
Further ones?
And the infrared, just for information, is really a preventive type, and we are trying to improve our reliability. I think we still have higher than expected or higher than industry standards on reliability, but we want to continue to improve in that area. And this infrared of transformers and connections are, is critical to that point.
Replacement of roofs, page 83, for substations 5, 5 and 10 and 7. Once again, yeah, it's just trying to get all that work done in one year period that you have it spread over. Just can't possibly.
I understand, but I did provide, if you'll, I mean.
No, I mean, I agree the project needs to be done. I'm just more concerned is, yeah, exposure that, you know.
I understand.
Needs to be done soon enough.
More damage, yeah, getting it done more.
These are things that just need to be addressed back. We're just trying to play catch up.
I understand. Right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Another point of information, as everyone knows, Ted's relatively new in his job, and he sort of took it on as a, a challenge. And fortunately, I think he's at least met and exceeded many of my expectations in what we're doing. And he and Tom have really made a very good team in trying to address the issues, especially in this period of our history of the electric utility.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, you know, thank you, guys, for all you do, and your people for all you do. It's, you know, when organizations go through trauma and travail, it's, to keep the lights on, to be cliche again, is, is, has been a major accomplishment, because it's no fun, having been through 10 or 12 mergers and changes and closings and openings and so on. And thank you to both of you and your people. Is that permissible, and?
Public comment?
Public comment?
Herb Whittall, 19 Park Avenue. You're talking about electricity and lighting. When I was working at Caterpillar, they took out half of the lights in their, do we need this much light here? Could we take these out, some of them, and reduce the electric use in the city, in all of the building?
It is one thing I would.
I think it's something to look at.
Yeah, it is one thing I request. We were looking at City Hall and Mr. Whittall. I asked if we would look at doing some kind of energy study to try to reduce our, our utility costs.
Well, I mean, if you just take the middle, oh, about every one of these here, you could still see very well in this. Now, maybe those lights don't work that way, but most of them do. And you could save a lot of electricity.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim?
I think that we've covered all the departments that were on our list. Going forward, tomorrow will be our wrap-up, starting at 9 o'clock. And we have in there the, obviously, the budget wrap-up, the retiree benefits review, which we have as a handout that everyone can have preview over the night. The one issue, and Cindy, you just, and I were just talking, the charter officer review, you didn't really want that part of the budget. We can take that and remove that, and you can do that at another time. We throw it out there just to make sure that everybody knows that.
That it needs to be done. Yeah, that it's time to get it. I would, yeah, certainly suggest we schedule that front of the time.
And the setting of the tentative millage, remember, this is the one where you set the high number. You can't go above that. It's, so whatever the number is that you pick, you have our recommendation in the budget book itself. So if you start tinkering with things, then we'll have to go. Because obviously, this is not the final. You still have to go through your hearings, public hearing, and the passing of the ordinance.
And we were, David promised us an overview of police overtime to come back with.
Well, again, those, those things we talked about, perhaps time, a couple of changes Wayne made, the, the changes in recreation, those we will do between now and your first public hearing, so that when you get that public hearing book, those changes you directed this week, plus anything else that we, you know, we find between now and then would be incorporated into the book. So David and I, well, I was here yesterday. We haven't a chance to look at the overtime at this point, so, I mean, I can talk to him and see if he, if he can do that by the morning, but.
Well, you know, the good news is, we started with five days, and I started by saying we needed to get it down to two days next year. And we had a half day on Tuesday that we, or Monday, whatever day it was, we didn't do. And half day today, and we're not going to do Fridays, so we're down to three days. Next year, we got to get another day out of the darn thing.
Two days for hearings and then a half a day for a wrap-up. Just a morning.
So, how many, how much time you all want to take as time with us? We'll just work with, we work with who we have to work with, you know, so.
With this particular group, probably anything over one day, Jim, is overkill.
But, and, and tomorrow shouldn't be more than the morning, so a couple hours is at the maximum, is the way we're sort of looking at this. But again, emphasizing what Cindy has said, we will be taking the numbers that you all have changed. For example, the reduction in revenue for the recreation, we will change that. And then the increase that we did in a couple of those line items, that'll be reflected in the document that you will receive for the first hearing.
For the first hearing.
What we'll also do between now and the first hearing is we'll have a conversation about the budget with the Finance Commission as well, just to let them know what you had directed and just have any other input.
And get their input, that'd be great.
Yeah. The other thing tomorrow, bring your calendars, because in addition to setting the millage, we have to set the two public hearing dates. And we're suggesting Wednesday the 3rd and then Tuesday the 17th, right, Tammy?
Uh-huh.
September. This has to be a 5:00 meeting.
September.
5:01 meeting, yeah.
5:10, just to push it with the law.
There's no further business?
I just wanted to thank everyone. I think the budget process is so important, not only because we're looking at numbers, but we're just having a chance with the council members to discuss philosophies and directions and policy for the coming year. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity for you guys to interact with the department directors, too. I think that's important, that you get to see what actually is happening in those departments. And I personally am very proud of the management team that we have here in the city, because they can all stand up toe-to-toe with anyone and talk professionally about what the services they operate. And I think that's important, that it's reflective to the public that they, they understand that.
Okay, we stand adjourned.
Okay, we stand adjourned.